I'd like to call the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for Thursday, October 6, 2022, to order. If everyone could please stand. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ethan, would you please call the roll?
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Galagos.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Soul.
Thank you. President's report, I only have one thing on my agenda on tonight, and that is the appointment of, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Jaclyn Miller to the Cross-Community Climax Collaborative, the C4 Sustainability Group, which Riverside has, is a signer onto with several other communities. Our lead trustees on that is trustee Aberdeen Marshazga and trustee Kristen Evans. So if I can have a motion, motion by trustee Marshazga, second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Galagos. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to thank Ms. Miller for agreeing to serve on this important initiative of the village. Managers' part, Ms. Francis?
Thank you. I have a couple items this evening. First, I would like to thank Deputy Chief Frank Lara for providing both the village board and village staff pink ribbons, so you'll notice, for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It is an annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. And I want to read something actually from Deputy Chief Lara that he had sent out to village staff. "I'm sure each of us knows someone, whether it's a family member, friend, or coworker affected by breast cancer. In an effort to raise awareness, I've decided to hand out free pink ribbons for officers and coworkers to wear during the month of October." He felt it was important to support those affected by cancer and to let them know that they are not alone in this breast cancer journey. And so, thank you to the board members for supporting him as well and displaying the breast cancer awareness ribbon.
And I'd like everyone to note, just, my father had breast cancer, so this isn't just a female disease. So, everyone should make sure they're checked. Thank you.
Additionally, I would like to thank everyone that made Tour de Proviso a success. The event would not have been a success without the work of Director Malkiotti organizing sponsors, coordinating with the zoo, and Visit Oak Park. Also, Director Buckley to ensure the safety of those participating in the event. Thank you to President Ballerine for working with other communities to bring this wonderful event to Riverside. And finally, thank you to the village trustees, Public Works, the Police Department, and Fire Department for their support during this event. My final item is some fun items as it relates to Parks and Recreation. So, for those of you that don't know, we have a haunted drive-through. And if you haven't signed up, there is still time. Registration closes on October 12th at 9:00 a.m., but don't wait, as this has been a very popular event since it was added in 2020 due to COVID. It is also, I wanted to note, it is Saturday, October 15th. There are two different timeframes that you can participate. One for younger kiddos, which is from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and for the older group, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Also, Parks and Recreation will be doing the Tower Lightning and Costume Parade around Centennial Park on Wednesday, October 19th at 6:00 p.m. If you would like to volunteer for the haunted drive-through, please contact Parks and Recreation as they are looking for any monsters that would like to participate. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. I think that's the call to you, Alex. Resident comments, non-agenda items, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ethan?
Approved voucher list of bills, October 6, 2022. Review and File Community Development, Fire and Police, August monthly reports. Approved Village Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes, September 15, 2022. Review and File Economic Development Commission's special meeting minutes, July 14, 2022. Review and File Landscape Advisory Commission's regular meeting minutes, August 9, 2022. Review and File Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting minutes, August 24, 2022. Review and File Historical Commission's regular meeting minutes, July 18, 2022. A resolution ratifying submission of a grant application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for the Quincy Street/Riverside Roads Streetscape project. A resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to Pierce Manufacturing of Appleton, Wisconsin for the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Pumper fire vehicle for an amount not to exceed $698,000. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the Village of Riverside for collections of ambulance fees.
Thank you, Ethan. Do any of these items need to be removed by any of the trustees? Hearing none, if I can have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Galagos, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
The next thing is Department, Board, and Commission reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Okay.
I believe we do have two items under that, the announcement of the public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry. First is the announcement of the public hearings, the proposed budget for fiscal 2023.
Good evening. Before you-
Director Johns.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce that on October 20th, 2021, before the village board meeting, we will be holding a public hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. The public hearing is a state requirement, and a notice will be in the landmark next week, with a draft budget available for inspection next Wednesday at Village Hall offices. The budget ordinance will be discussed, the budget will be discussed throughout October and November, with formal action scheduled for December 1st, 2022.
Thank you. The announcement of the public here of the, oh, you did both of them? Okay. Is there any other reports this evening?
Oh, sorry, no, I do need to read the next one.
Okay.
We do have also a public hearing on October 20th, 2022, for the 2022 tax levy ordinance. The State of Illinois Truth in Taxation Law requires that not less than 20 days prior to any taxing body accepting its property tax levies, it must determine how many dollars in aggregate the tax levy extensions will be necessary. The hearing will be scheduled October 20th for the 2022 levy that will be collected in years 2023 and beyond. Notice will appear in the landmark next week.
Thank you. Are there any other reports this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to pending business. A First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library relative to issuance and administrative of $1.5 million of general obligation library bonds. Director Johns?
Good evening again. On June 9, 2020, the board entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Riverside Public Library for issuance of $1.5 million in general obligation bonds for the lower-level library improvements. The library's renovation project came in under budget by $248,817.48. The library has requested that the remaining funds be retained by the library for additional capital improvements to the library. The library director and president and representatives are here if you have any questions about their future project.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, Tiffany?
Hi, my name is Courtney Grieve Hack. I am the vice president of the library board. We are very happy that our project came in under budget. In some ways, we benefited from the pandemic. Being able to have the library closed meant that we could do the entire lower-level renovation simultaneously, and we didn't have to close it down in sections which would have taken longer. The bids also came in lower. So, overall, we think that the funds that are remaining should be used to further improve the lower level. For example, the great library staff led by Janice has identified additional maker space and STEM technology and programming that they'd like to introduce. And to do so, we're going to put some of the funds toward kind of mobile maker space units that can be moved around the lower level and have the 3D printer, for example, and other really great tools that'll be great for learning opportunities, especially for the youth. That's just one project that we'd like to apply the additional funds to. What's that? Oh, and also, we get frequent requests for an individualized study room. So, a space where people can come and have a closed-off area, quiet, separate from the rest of the learning spaces. And one of our lower-level locations is a closet that's kind of between the meeting room and some of the lower stacks. It's tucked away. And that's going to be converted into a study space so that people can reserve that room and have a real nice space where they can study separately away from the other open areas.
Thank you. Any questions from the trustees? Thank you for everything you do for the village and for the residents.
Thank you.
So if I can have a motion in a second?
Make a motion.
Motion by trustee Evans, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Galagos.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is our continued discussion of our EV charging stations. Clerk Soul, would you take us through this, please?
Of course. Good evening. So, just a couple housekeeping items. I'm on page 142 of the agenda packet, if you'd like to follow along. There is also a map of village parking lots at your seat, which will be helpful as we go forward with this discussion. So, a thing I'd just like to start with, so we can get it out there, is level-two charging stations take about 10 to 20 miles of range per hour, depending on their power output and charge rate. And level-three chargers add about 60 to 80 miles of range every 20 minutes. That varies a little bit, but that's helpful information. So, at the August 4th meeting, the village board reached a consensus to utilize a $10,000 grant from ComEd to install a charging station by the end of March of 2023. We discussed locations and types of chargers, but we needed more information to go forward. So, the village did some additional research. The first thing we did was we administered three surveys. One for the entire village, one for business owners, and one for renters. In the village-wide survey, there were 268 responses. 112 stated that they would currently plan or already own an EV in the next three years. Those, 44% of respondents preferred level-two chargers, whereas 35% preferred level-threes. And 21% chose that they just prefer to charge at home, and they don't see the need or want to see chargers in public. When asked about location, the village residents stated that they would prefer general public and business parking lots. That received 50 first-place selections. The next most preferred area would be commuter parking lots, which finished with 44. Business owners and renters, we didn't receive a lot of responses on those surveys. However, some business owners have been hearing from patrons that there are a need for EV charging stations. Of the 21 renters that responded, only six currently owned an EV or plan to own one in the next three years. We also did some research on surrounding EV charging stations in the area, and Berwyn, Westchester, and North Riverside all have level-threes. Berwyn and Westchester charge 29 cents per minute for those charging stations. North Riverside and Forest Park also have level-two charging stations, which they do not charge for. So, what do we want to hear tonight? What do we want to discuss tonight? We want to discuss the level of the charging stations to be installed, the location and number of charging stations to be installed, specifically, not only the number we want installed by next March, but also in the future at that given location. That has to do with the amount of infrastructure we have to provide at the site. We would have to redo a lot if we decided to have more later. I think it's also helpful to know that we have about 93 electric vehicles in Riverside. 59 of those vehicles are Teslas. It is hard to tell how many hybrid vehicles we have from our current data, although I assume we have more than 93. And the only other item we would like to hear discussed tonight would be, do we want this to be a subsidized service or a pay service? So, do we want to charge residents for using this charging station, or do we want it to be a free service? I will note that it is quite common for level-two charging stations to be free, whereas level-threes are almost always charged, just given the nature of how much they cost. With that, we have Public Works Director Dan Tab, who will also answer questions, and David Novak sitting up front from the village's engineering firm.
Ethan, could you, North Riverside, did you say, has a level-three?
Yes.
Where is that at?
It's in front of the Amazon Fresh.
That's a level-two. I use that one.
Yes, the level-three is at a different location.
Okay.
I'm not sure where that was. I'll have to look it up.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tab?
I'm available for questions.
Okay.
To the points that you were asking. So, if you would just want to go down?
Yeah, I'll restate them. So, first, we want to know the level of charging stations to be installed, so level-two or level-three. We also want to know the location and the number of chargers at that location. We could also consider a public-private partnership here, so with one of our businesses, if that's something the board desires, we'll also be interested in that. And then, whether we want it to be a free or pay service. So, first item would be level of charger.
The gentleman from Christopher Burke, I'm sorry, here, would you give us some background of your expertise in EV charging? Would you, please?
My name is David Novak from Chris Burke Engineering, and I head up the Energy Department in Mechanical-Electrical Division. And I work primarily with spec-ing out the EV projects that we come across. We have done a number of EV projects throughout the years, specifically Chicago Ridge, Harper College, Algonquin. We at Burke Engineering have six chargers of our own for employees to use, as well as are out on the network for public use.
Okay.
So, we design, you know, work with ComEd and coordinate the installation and construction of EV charging sites.
Most of the EV chargers that you install, are they level-two or level-three?
Presently, level-two.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from any trustees? Anyone, any comments? Mr. Pollak?
Question for the gentleman from Burke. It looks like there's three cost proposals in our packet. I don't see, maybe I'm just missing it, I don't see what level those are.
Those are all level-two.
Level-twos, okay. And the cost difference is based on how close electricity is and that type of thing?
And additional infrastructure needs to be brought in, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
I will give you my input, since I am the proud owner of a fully-electric vehicle for the last three weeks, which I've tried to get the village to reimburse me for as part of this study, but they refused. I have a level-one, and I'm basically an outlet. I charge my car in my garage overnight. It's not the best, but it does get me a full charge, usually within 12 hours. I drive, you know, my wife and I make our decisions on who gets the electric car and who drives farther during the day. And I make some of the decisions when I, I make the decision to drive farther so I can drive the new car. But the other day, I was going to Wheaton, and I had a choice of, I had to pick up some stuff at Trader Joe's, and my thought process was, I'll go to Wheaton, and let's see if there's a charger out at the Trader Joe's in Wheaton. And you can pull it up on your car as you're driving, and there wasn't any there. So, I just figured, you know, I'll just bypass that and go back to the Trader Joe's in the Grange on the way back. So, I look at these charging stations that are out in the public realm as more economic engines. It's something, if somebody is deciding to go shopping for, you know, at a grocery store, and they have a choice between Tischler's and Brookfield or Riverside Foods in Riverside, they would say, you know, I can go to Riverside, I could throw it in, because a lot of the level-twos, they have a time limit. You're only allowed on there for a couple hours, else they start charging you a-
Idle fees.
Idle fees, because they want you to get in and they want you to get out. They want you to put in, back to your car, primarily what you've used. The level-threes are supposed to be within a mile of the expressways. So, you can get in and get yourself charged up in 15 minutes or so, and then get out on the road. And actually, Tesla does say that it's not good for your car to be charging at a level-three on a regular basis. So, that's my experience. It's limited, three weeks, but I've yet to end up on the side of the road with an extension cord asking for somebody to plug me in. And it's worked out, it's worked out very good, so.
I think it's important to note, too, that level-two charging stations, if you have a, or level-three charging stations, if you have a hybrid vehicle, you wouldn't be able to charge on level-three, so. And also, with level-three charging networks, typical when you purchase an EV, not Teslas, but a lot of charging networks will provide you like free charging for like 12 months or whatever. So, if we installed a level-three charger, we might get a lot of, like, a lot of recurrent customers for that charge. And those people, from what I read, tend to sit in their car for 20 to 40 minutes, and they just come back every week, or every few days, or whatever they need. But that's just an interesting tidbit, so.
Well, in the Tesla, there's actually, you could watch Netflix while the car charged.
Yeah.
It's pretty wild. But any other, yes, Ms. Simmons?
I just noticed that the Willa, the business owners for location did not align with the public for where to put the, where to put them. They want, so it looks like business owners would prefer that the chargers are put in commuter parking, where the public, the respondents that were not business owners would want them closer to the downtown area by the businesses. I was just wondering if maybe we could go back, like, when we're finalizing the space, we could go back and talk to the business owners about it, and let them know that people want to park near their businesses.
We've had some conversations with a couple business owners already. Peter from Riverside Food has had Commonwealth Edison out, so he's in, he's already working through some of the things, and he's going to come to us with a proposal. But I, personally, from my experience, I think that, again, these are economic drivers to our village, versus putting them in a commuter lot where someone goes in, plugs in on his way to work, and is there for six hours. That, I don't think that serves the village well. It serves that person well. And the same thing with some of the residential lots. So, I look at it as an economic thing. So, I would, my thought would be more towards our CBD, whether it's, you know, the Burlington, Quincy area. My other thought would be level-two, since it's like a two-hour, you get the 10, 20 miles that you've, that you've used to get to your place, and then you move on, and you do your main charging at home. And if you really, you know, if you really need to boost up somewhere, you can, there's some, well, there's level-threes to get to in Burr Ridge and in Oakbrook very easily. So, Aberdeen, you have a-
Yeah, I'm nodding in agreement with you, because initially, I was thinking that the level-threes might attract a certain type of, you know, automobile owner, a certain type of customer, that would seek out Riverside as a destination. But in seeing the survey results and seeing who owns what, and that's just in our community, and really analyzing how people make their shopping choices, just the availability of free charging, even people like me who own a hybrid would prefer to, you know, patronize an establishment that had the charger available. And I'd like to be able to use it and not be locked out of that by the fact that it's a level-three that won't work with my hybrid, so.
So, do I have, I mean, we all kind of in agreement that we want to keep it in the CBD area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are level-two, level-three?
Two.
Level-two?
Two.
We will continue our discussion with some of the business-
Can I just ask a question from the gentleman from Burke? Trustee Pollak asked you if you're putting in more twos, and you said presently twos. Are you, are you seeing a trend? We're happy to take a prediction.
There is more interest in level-threes for various reasons, predominantly because of the IEPA, Illinois EPA has come out with 80%, up to 80% of installation and equipment costs that will be reimbursed on a grant for level-two and level-three, as well as the infrastructure from ComEd to support that. The infrastructure is quite expensive for level-three from ComEd's side, as well as the charger themselves, run in the neighborhood, installed about $150,000 to $180,000 per charger, versus approximately, we'll just say, $25,000 per port installed for a level-two.
But those grants for the level-three, at the IML conference, there was a lady who was, you have to be within a mile of a major expressway?
They have to be approved, but, you know, when you make your application with the design, et cetera, that's not necessarily the case, from my understanding of the new grant money that's coming out. That has to do, I think, with the federal government that is coming out next year, where the infrastructure bill that the president signed, that's all going to be level-three predominantly along the interstate system.
Okay, so that's the one where you have to be within-
Correct. You know, that's where they want you to build it out, so when you're traveling from here to Des Moines or here to Milwaukee, you're going to have easy on, easy off, but you're still going to have to wait 30 minutes approximately to charge your car.
I actually programmed my car to go to Miami, just to see what it would do. And it was, it mapped it out and said, you're going to stop in, you know, so-and-so Kentucky for 15 minutes, and then you're going to stop in so-and-so Tennessee for 12 minutes. And it just, it just had it all the way to Miami. I didn't do it, but I thought it was interesting that it had that kind of sophistication, and that there was that many networks out there already.
And one of the, you know, the advantage of having a Tesla is that there's the Tesla network, which is much more robust than the other level-three chargers that are out there for a Ford or a BMW or a Chevy Bolt that's currently out there. They can't use a Tesla network.
And being unfamiliar with the technology, it's not something that can be converted over time, right? If we made an election to go for level-two, and then if the technology gets away from us in a short period of time, and everybody's at a level-three, is it something we could convert?
and everybody's at a level three, is it something we could convert or would we lose?
No. There's a big difference between level two and level three. Level three, as Phil's president mentioned, you're not supposed to charge your car that often on a level three. It's much for your battery longevity. And due to the fact that the battery is one of the more expensive components to the vehicle, it may cut down on your life expectancy on your battery. So most people currently approximately 80% charge at home. So most days you're coming out with, we'll say a full tank, ready to go. And you're not going to drive the 200, 250, 300 mile range that you're given. So, you know, you're then going to make it back home and recharge again that night. You could take advantage of different places around that, you know, to charge locally. And one of the incentives, as President said, that it does attract people to the downtowns. They like that. It, it seems to be a driver for business to, you know, bring that in. Not so much a level three. Level three is a much bigger unit. It's not just going to be a little stand, you know, that you can plug in like you see in a lot of the pictures.
Got it. I, I'm supportive. I just wanted to make sure I understand. I, I'm not a technologist, but I do know it moves fast. And so I wanted to make sure that we weren't putting in something that's already becoming obsolete. I think that if we are being thoughtful about the purpose of this, I agree with the trustees that have spoken that residents here likely charge overnight in their own home. And so the, if the purpose is to try to drive, make it more attractive to come to our business district, that's where it makes sense. I'm supportive. I, I am curious how, it sounds like you're putting in a lot of these, how long it'll be until everyone has one in it. We've now spent the money and it's not something that's unique or particularly a driver, but it's hard to find a downside in supporting something that is more environmentally friendly.
What's really driving a lot of this is the grant money that's coming out from the IEPA. Before that, when you, if you were to say, do you want to spend 90,000, 150,000 on EV charging and who's going to use them? Most businesses, municipalities are saying, but we'll wait. And now that this money's out there, all of a sudden, we have an influx of inquiries, design opportunities, et cetera, that we've engaged in in different parking lots that they're ready to go. It's a matter of the funding and then once they're, you know, then it's, they'll get them. And then the other component is building out the infrastructure for additional units later. So the big part is the backbone of the, how much power do you have in the area? To support additional units later. So then it's just running the wires out to the stand area and hooking them up. A large portion is bringing electricity to the parking lot.
So we're?
Sufficient power.
We're considering a design that would support additional units in the future? Are we?
I think we're, we're, yeah. Well, I think if we, you know, with the Quincy Street redevelopment, if we get that, we can obviously work that in with that. You know, I think our goal is to continue to work with our businesses to see if we can do a partnership with some of the businesses. Seek out whatever grant money we can, we can find as it becomes available. I think the goal of tonight was to try to get a handle on, you know, are we, do we want this in commuter lots? Do we want this in pub, you know, residential lots or do we want this in the CBD? And I think we've, we've answered two of the three questions. And I think the third question on the cost and if we're going to subsidize it, I think that all is going to come down to how the grant money and some of those other, some of those other issues is. Is that fair? Mr. Pollak?
I would suggest that we charge to reimburse our costs, our total costs over a period of three to five years. So we, if we get a grant, that's that much less we have to charge per minute. If we don't get a grant, then that's how much more we have to charge per minute. But I would see paying off the cap, the, the initial investment in three to five years and then after that discharging what it cost us to provide the electricity.
I would agree with Doug. I mean, in, in theory, we want to make up our, the money that we've spent. However, if, I would want to check and see what other municipalities do. If they don't charge and we do, they'll just skip Riverside.
So to answer that a little bit, level for level two char, well, first of all, municipalities around us don't do this. Like it's almost all privately, you know, owned and operated charging stations. We would be the first in this area, the ones I described. In North Riverside, Irwin, Forest Park, they're all privately owned. Oak Park has a ton of them. They're all privately owned in parking garages and parking lots. And then level two charging stations, it's kind of hit or miss. Some charge, some don't. So if we, I would anticipate that if we charge, they would find other charging stations in the area to look at. What I've seen is they start off not charging. For instance, in Glen Allen, I live in Wheaton and they started off their first two years not charging and then they started charging for them, level twos. So if that helps.
Can you clarify something you just said? You said there would be the first municipality?
Not in the state by any stretch.
I know that, but what, I mean, how is, so North Riverside's charging stations are owned by, I know the one at the Amazon is owned by Volta.
Yeah. Well, it's, that's where it's hosted. I mean, Amazon Fresh or, yeah, owns those. And then they're on Volta's network.
Okay, so Amazon Fresh is the one that actually put out the capital outlay for that?
Tesla in August, actually. So they never, Tesla never used to let businesses charge for level two charging stations. In August, they opened it up where businesses can choose to charge. Most haven't gone to that just because they see it as getting customers in the door. They don't really see the chargers themselves as a revenue driver. But they have the option to with Tesla's level two charging stations right now.
Okay. The cost to charges, I think if I looked at it's like 20, like 26 cents a kilowatt hour, something like that?
The level threes I saw were 29 cents. It's hard, I don't, the level twos vary. I don't have a ton of data on that. Some of it's not, you can't just look it up like gas prices as much.
Okay, but at 26 cents a kilowatt hour, how long, I mean, how much? Two hours of kilo, how, two hours of charging would cost you? Is it as simple as saying 52 cents or is there?
We ran the numbers. If you have a range of 360 miles on your vehicle over, if you're using, you know, for instance, we used the level three per minute cost. It was around $35 to do a full charge. So at the current gas prices, that's half if not less than the full tank of gas.
Okay, so the cost, the cost to charge, if you're gonna, if it's going to be an economic incentive and you're only going to allow someone to sit there for two hours is basically, well, for that one person, but you'd have it all day long. So I, I can see where you're coming from. Okay.
And depending on the company that, you know, we want to host the charging stations with, they typically take a portion of that from us. So it depends on the agreement we enter into with them. It's kind of hard to anticipate, but, so we're not just getting all of that money back.
Okay. Thank you. Very, very good. Do you have enough, do you have enough information to continue your research?
I guess that would be a question for Dan. I, I know it's a little urgent considering we need to have them installed by the end of next March. Unless we do a public-private partnership, we just need proof of expenditure, so.
Right. ComEd is, even though he doesn't need to, Sean, wait here one second. ComEd requires a, a plan of action due shortly, end of October?
Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus requires it, but same difference.
Right. So we have to, in essence, have an action plan as to how we're going to approach this. Because if we do the private-public partnership, we would then turn over the, the grant. And then we have, the project would have to be completed by the end of March. If we elect to do it ourselves, it still has to be completed by the end of March. But due to the building season, we should start deciding what we're going to do sooner than later. So we're kind of in a position, do we want to go down the road of private-public partnership and bank that we will have a business in town take us up on that? Or do we want to forego that and go alone with a, a set of chargers in one of our business lots such as the lot on East Burlington? Does that, that be the easiest one to, you know, there's no permitting in there. It's, it's open to, to anyone. So it's the cleanest way. Pollak?
I would suggest we proceed with at least one charger in the green parking lot because that's most accessible to the public, I think. Just for the sake of meeting this, this grant requirements. And the question would be, do we put in just one for now or is it cost effective to do multiple at once? I don't know. But I'd say we proceed with that, level two with some kind of credit card charging, like, much like a parking meter.
Yeah, the units themselves are fair, you know, the majority of the costs are due to the infrastructure. Bringing the power to the site, you know, the pedestal for the metering and, but the chargers are 7,500 to 10 grand apiece. Yeah.
I would agree with that. And then we, I think we take it a two-pronged approach. That we, we, we identify one of our, and the green parking lot would be, would be a great spot. There's those two spots by the, you know, that are kind of tucked in the back or, or in the front, wherever.
We would want to get them as close to that, that ComEd line running through there. They have a pole. We'd most likely put a transformer on, bring power adjacent to that. So it's the, it would be the west side of the lot, the southwest corner.
The most advantageous spot.
And the proposed proposals for two pedestals at that location.
So that would be two?
For capacity for four vehicles.
Okay. And then I think we, we continue to discuss partnerships with businesses and see if that, how that shakes out. Cause we have a couple that are, that have, that have shown interest.
Right.
So we'll continue that dialogue also. I don't think we do. I think, do we need a, no?
Consensus, I think, would give him direction.
Yes. What staff will do is hopefully it will find out if any business has interest in short order. If they don't, then we will pivot and bring back a proposal for the village board to them formally approve so then that we can get this started pretty quickly.
I'd, I'd like to put that out there. We are going to be working on ComEd's schedule when we start this process. There is no guarantee we will get this done at the end of March as we sit here now. So I just want to put that out there because as we get into early spring and we're still waiting for ComEd doing some of their infrastructure to get us the power to the site, you know, we're on their, we're on their schedule.
Well, what's the downside of telling ComEd that to start to, 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 that we've chosen this spot?
They bring one of their engineers out. They have to do a study, their own study to see how their network would handle the draw. Then we submit our designs to them. They review it. They have to approve it. And then they come out and do the, the installation of the, of their portion of the infrastructure.
Okay, so what, what's the downside of saying, giving, giving ComEd the go ahead?
We can call them up tomorrow and say, this is what we plan on doing. Let's start the ball rolling on this. But even with that, I don't, I can't tell you right now if they're backlogged, you know, what the process, are you seeing anything?
Well, we just sent in an application for level three for another municipality and that lead time is about a year.
Okay.
It's, it's much shorter for the, what we're trying to, what has been proposed to do in the Burlington lot and these, you know, bringing power off of a pole with a transformer. That's much simpler than level three, but it's still going to be every bit of three to four months.
Okay.
So while we go down the path of our own installation, we may want to allow, if we're approached by a private entity, you know, I know we can handle it how you, you would like, but we may want to still have that money to have another installation within the CBD.
If I, if I, if I understood Peter correctly, ComEd has already been out to Riverside Foods. So they're, 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 they're moving pretty quick and they were actually supposed to have a meeting this week again with his electrician and some people like that. Can, does everything have to go through the ComEd poll or can you go off of the person's?
Well, if he has sufficient power coming out of his building, that's quite simple.
Right.
Then it's a matter of slot in an electrical panel and he has sufficient capacity and you bore a hole through the wall and come exit out into the parking lot. And run your conduit wherever you so choose to put it, you know, underground to whatever location you want. Typically they're close to the building.
Right.
To cut down on expense. So that's a quick process. That's simple. You already have the power available.
You just need a 50 amp?
You just, you just need to put the 50 amp breaker in. And, and as long as your capacity coming into the building is sufficient and you're not overloaded, they'll do a load calculation and, you know, if you're fine, you're good.
Okay, but you wouldn't be able to put like a dual charger on a 50 amp? That you'd only have to do a single, correct?
You can do, you can do a dual. And what they'll do is that they will balance themselves so not to blow, blow the breaker. So they will only give out like half the load. Instead of getting 40 amps.
You'll get 20.
You'll get 20.
Okay.
If there's two cars there. If there's one, you get the 40. That way they, it's a save on the infrastructure of how often chargers are being used. They're not always going to be used 24/7, you know, eight spots are all taken up. It's only if there is, then it, it helps keep the cost down.
Okay. I think that's, that's a, it's a great way of completing this system a lot quicker. Is to find those public and private partnerships that we can work with to, to, to tap into. But I still think you should contact Commonwealth Edison and, and start getting the ball rolling for that one. Cause we can always say, we've changed your mind or whatever, correct?
Yeah, we're, I don't think we're locking ourselves in anything with ComEd to do a preliminary study as far as what would it take to install a transformer and pedestal and all that stuff.
Okay. I think that's probably a good thing to do. Go ahead.
Just to kind of close the loop, as it relates to the, so let's say we have a business that's interested in partnering with us. Would the board still be interested because if we, we already overcome the hurdle with ComEd and they're like, yep, you can do it in that, in that location, would we be interested in then saying that's either our location for a level three? Especially if we can get grant funding through the state and then we already have a secured location? Or we could also look at doing another level two? I'm just trying to give the board options.
I would be inclined to do another level two. Just based on the fact that so many people are just newly coming to the idea of electric vehicles and hybrids. You know, I think that the economic driver is going to reach more people and have more impact if we offer free charging with those level twos. I am encouraged, greatly encouraged by the IEPA draft that they published for their rules on the, on the program. It does suggest that an entity can apply for, you know, more than one set of chargers for reimbursement. So if it turns out that with respect to the first one that needs to be installed by the end of March for which we have this $10,000 grant, that the public-private partnership can move and move quicker than ComEd can get to us to really do that, you know, full study and that we can issue, you know, you know, bid request proposals, things like that. You know, to, to move for the village lot. We can still pursue it if we operate within the IEPA timeline. So it's, it's not a lost cause and I think we'd be serving our business community a lot better if we had multiple chargers here.
I would agree. And I'm, I would agree with you too that I, I think the idea of a level three, it almost goes against the economic driver. You want people here to stay for a while. You want them to go shopping. You want them to go have lunch or do whatever. You don't want them to sit in their car for 15 minutes and watch Netflix or play Asteroids and be gone. So I think you should contact Commonwealth Edison and get that ball rolling. And we will continue our, our, our contacts with the businesses in town and see which ones we can work with. And I think if we can try to work where we can get into their, to their systems or their, their electric panels, that makes all the sense in the world. Cause it'd be a lot less expensive. It would be faster. And we could be up and running quicker. quicker. Okay, thank you. Everybody good? Doug? Kristen, everyone good?
Yes.
Hey, I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you very much. Dan, thank you. Ethan, wonderful job.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ethan.
Third item is the discussion of the ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to incorporating a transit-oriented development TOD best practices and to make certain other changes. Ms. Monroe?
Good evening. So this is, our discussion this evening is related to the second of four ordinances, ordinance draft agenda items that will be presented at multiple meetings of the village board. There won't be any action taken until all materials and the, all of the ordinances have been discussed and updated as needed. I'm going to run through several items very quickly, similarly to the last meeting, where I'll just list the proposed changes and leave you to any discussion and any questions that you might have. So the packet item starts on page 150 of the agenda packet. The proposed changes that we are discussing or preparing and presenting this evening were reviewed at several Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, but presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission their June 22 hearing this summer. So figures 1 to 4A in 10-4-3 regarding residential bulk requirements are updated, for some clarity and quality. Language is revised in 10-5-1 and 10-5-3 of business districts to specify support for safe pedestrian access, transit access within the B1 and B2 business districts. So remember, the purpose and intent of this, these ordinance changes are related to transit-oriented development changes within the code. Other changes are an update to special allowable uses in the commercial and residential charts. Some addresses needed to, and street names needed to be corrected. Subsections A, C5, and the addition of subsection D in 10-5-5 about bulk requirements were changed to include some of those TOD principles. It specifies storefront window display standards and adds a section to address outdoor dining setbacks in B2 districts, so that's the central business district area. Sections 10-5-6 and 10-5-7 related to the B1 and B2 districts, building scale and design standards. We are incorporating facade design along all four sides of a building, including those along the railroad. The new section also includes standards for sustainable design and adds bicycle parking requirements. And these, when they're implemented, would be applied to the new and redeveloped properties. Table 6 of 10-5-9, the B2 district bulk requirements is amended to add a principal building minimum height of 24 feet, a maximum building height of 48 feet or up to four stories, whichever is lower. It does provide, add a provision for a height up to five stories or 60 feet for planned unit development, so PUD. And yard setbacks are also revised for the standards related to outdoor dining. 10-6-2 for use standards adds language for clarity, includes some updated terms. 10-6-2F is removing the current 20% limitation. We apply this as a percentage of linear street frontage in the B2 retail core for ground floor office use. It's replacing that standard with a special use requirement for new active office uses, and it allows above-ground offices, they're permitted outright. Amendments to temporary uses in section 10-6-3 identify zoning districts where temporary uses, temporary sales, Christmas tree sales, et cetera, are permitted. 10-7-3 on accessory structures and uses is being amended to include standards for fences and walls in business districts. We did not have a distinction between residential and business district for fencing. It adds the temporary membrane structures, tents, and canopy text, and there are also updated graphics. The encroachments table in 10-7-4 has been updated to include minor text corrections, add some regulations and footnotes for outdoor sales and display, outdoor seating and dining, and outdoor storage in business districts. 10-8, that's a section on off-street parking, includes revisions to general provisions and off-street loading regulations. It also adds bicycle parking regulations and criteria for bicycle, moped, and motorcycle parking as appropriate. And the last item is the 10-9-6 improves pedestrian walkways inside and adjacent to parking areas and updates a screening standard graphic. So if you have particular questions, I'll let you have discussion. Thank you.
Well, I think everyone should be aware, and Ms. Monroe alluded to this, this, we're still, this is, it took since three years for this to get through the planning and zoning. It's not going to get through this board in three meetings. So I, you know, this is a lot to digest. So I just, you know, we're trying to look at, you know, trying to get some feedback, and then the staff will come back with some answers and try to, you know, bring this around and get to a good conclusion. Are there any specific items or questions? Go ahead, Ms. Monroe.
I tell you, I, I'm frustrated by this process, and I apologize for coming off as hostile, but I'm frustrated. I spent upwards of 10-plus hours trying to decipher all this. And to tell me something's being updated, but not telling me how, or tell me it's being updated for TOD standards and not telling me how, I mean, I work with the Internal Revenue Code for a living. I'm used to parsing through cross-references and everything else. I tried to do that here. I couldn't. So if someone asked me tomorrow, Ed, what did you do at the board meeting? You talked about this. What does it say? I couldn't begin to tell them what it says, and that frustrates me. So I, you know, I can't even begin to ask a question, because after all that 10 hours, I can't even articulate what I'm reading. So I don't, you know, several, probably in the first meeting, I asked for a chart. What's the, what was the old language? What's the new language? Why is it being changed? I haven't gotten that. I spent a lot of time trying to do that on my own. I had to give up. So I don't know what's being hidden. I don't know why this is so difficult to understand, but, you know, maybe it's me, maybe I'm losing, but I don't think so. So if we can find a better way than to just tell me that something's been updated, or something's been, you know, amended to different standards, you know, a resident comes up to me, okay, you amended this to different standards, what did you just do? Or what are you proposing? You know, other than tell them we amended it to different standards, I couldn't tell them.
I appreciate the feedback. We can certainly address the changes in a different way. You know, if we'd like to see it in a different format than the redlined ordinance, to provide that in the chart, as you're suggesting, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think a chart would be helpful, because the redlining is difficult to follow, because there's cross-references, and it's a lot of, you know, ordinance language that, you know, you're trying to go back six sections to figure out what it says. It's just, it's too much.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I agree. I mean, not being a zoning person, I found this, I mean, I delved in this, and this kept going and kept going, and then Doug asked a question this morning about storage, and I'm like, where is their storage? I didn't even see that in here. So it does have a lot of information in here.
Yeah.
And I would like to know why some of that stuff. What was the driver for the storage? I mean, that was very important. Why is it there? What is the driver for some of the setbacks? You know, is, are we making, I mean, this is supposed to make businesses come to Riverside easier. Is it easier for a landlord? I think Charlie Peiple did a wonderful job in the preservation. Is it easier to make a landlord go through a special use process for certain businesses? But we don't tell them what businesses, we kind of alluded to it, but what businesses does we don't want? So I, you know, I kind of got lost on some of that stuff. But go ahead, Doug, please.
Well, partly in jest here, it's interesting, I just found out that tax, or that zoning law is more esoteric than tax law.
That's probably why you're struggling.
Just kidding. Yeah, I don't have any issues with, I just have one issue, let me put it that way. I commend the Planning and Zoning Commission. I thought they did a good job with this. Of course, I was on the steering committee that started this process. I think there's probably, I'm going to try to summarize, in my mind, I think there's three, or two main issues, two main substantive changes that are being made here. One is the increase in building height. The second is making office uses a special use on the first floor. Those, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, those seem to be the substantive issues that affect how people use their properties in all of this. There's some other minor things, but that's the main thing. And that is very typical of a TOD plan. You're trying to create a streetscape that is active and alive, that thus, you want retail uses to have people coming and going more than office uses do, at least on the first floor. I'm supportive of that, but I also realize how difficult that is in today's retail market. A lot of villages, a lot of villages traditionally had that same requirement, first floor, only retail restaurants in your downtown. Some villages I know are getting away from that, because retail industry is dying, and they just feel like they can't afford to be that proactive with it. I think the special use approval, though, allows, is a good balance. It allows people to still put offices on the first floor, but it encourages them to first look and try to lease to retail or restaurant-type uses. In terms of the building height, you know, in the B2, we're looking at the B2 tonight, it is increasing the permitted building height from three stories to four stories, but we already have, the only really new building in the downtown is a four-story building, so we allowed that, and I think that was, turned out to be a success. I mean, I think the massing and height of that building is very appropriate and desirable. The extra story adds density, which we want. Part of TOD planning is to have more people in your downtown, and so, and it makes it more economically viable for people to redevelop and build a new building. I think that there is a provision to go to five stories, but that's only in a PUD, and we would have discretion to say no to that. So if anything was taller than the Village Center building, they could ask for it, but they'd have to prove to us that it fits on the property, that it's not going to create undesirable shadows, or whatever. And they'll have to provide a public benefit for that increased height, beyond just compliance with the zoning ordinance. That's what a PUD is. It requires proof of a public benefit above and beyond just compliance with the code. So I'm okay with those two issues. The only thing that I was concerned about in reviewing this this week, and, you know, I apologize, I should have caught this on the steering committee, actually, let alone during planning and zoning, but there's a provision in the permitted encroachment section. You have, you know, permanent outdoor sales and display, we have permanent outdoor seating areas, that's fine, but then it also includes permanent outdoor storage for business use. And it says not permitted in the front yard, but is permitted in a side or rear yard. By definition, that's outside storage that's not in a container, not enclosed with a structure. And we do allow temporary membrane storage structures, tents, basically. We also allow container units, like a pod, on a temporary basis. I don't think it's appropriate to allow outside storage in our business districts, even if it's screened with a fence. If a business wants to store extra pallets from their, you know, racking system, and they want to just throw it in the back of the building, I don't think we should allow that, except on a temporary basis and within an enclosed tent. If a business has a need, for some reason, they're transitioning or whatever, there are provisions that allow them to do that. So I would like to see the permanent outdoor storage for business use to be changed to be not permitted under any circumstances. And I did talk to Chair Persson Mateo about this, as well as Assistant Manager Monroe today, just to make sure I wasn't missing anything, and there didn't seem to be any good reason why that got included in the draft, so I don't think there's any reasons to leave it in there. But other than that, I'm comfortable with the draft amendments.
Doug? Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask a question about section 10 on page 13, table 6, 10-5-9. In red, it says 24 foot would be the minimum of the principal building. I'm going to ask how you got to that conclusion.
I'm pulling this up. So, well, 24 feet, there are some, predominantly in the downtown and along Harlem, there are a selection of two-story buildings, so you'd figure there's at least, you know, 10, maybe eight to 10 feet for each building height. Certainly, some are taller than that, but generally, that was a recommendation from the consultant, I believe.
From the steering committee.
From the steering committee? Okay. So in thinking that it's a reasonable range to have as a minimum building height, there's something to be said about a pedestrian scale, and so thinking about one or more stories at a kind of uniform height along a streetscape, that was the recommendation for that building height.
So if, say, McDonald's wanted to build one of the restaurants here, and their buildings are not 24 feet, they would not meet code? You'd have to say, no, you cannot open up one of your franchises here. Is that accurate?
Permitted outright, so they would need some other review level, potentially, so there would be a site plan review required. And then as part of that review, there would also need to be determined whether there's either a height variation required, or other types of zoning waivers that would be necessary.
Show hardship, is that right?
Yeah, for a variance, yes.
Okay.
So just for reference, Sherwin-Williams, how high is that?
We checked the site plan, it's 18 feet. So it's less than the 24 feet minimum.
Okay. I think Alex brings up a good point. You limit, I mean, if McDonald's, I mean, I began going up and down Roosevelt Road, and I saw wonderful buildings all along there that I would love to have in Riverside, Home Run-In Pizza, Giordano's, and they're not 24 feet high. How could they show a hardship? They're, they don't buy buildings not 24, you have to have 24, it's too costly, that's not a hardship. So we're walking away from some, I think we're putting ourselves in a box we don't need to be, because these changes are supposed to help us bring businesses, not detract from the businesses. But go ahead, Stevens.
Yeah, I agree with President Ballereen. We are putting ourselves in a box. But I mean, first, I wanted to thank you for the work that you put into the materials, because I know that you did a lot of work just to put this together. And I understood it with a phone call to Commissioner Mateo, so I wanted to thank you for your work. But, and also, yes, if we're going to, we can have a one-story business, 18 foot, 18 feet is good. I wanted to know why, how they came up with the 24 feet.
Doug?
As a member of the steering committee, I think I can address that. The memorandum... was is established, uh, for the purpose of of streetscape and street design. Um, if you're in a downtown area or in a in our TOD area at Harlem and Burlington, um, one-story buildings do not create a streetscape. Uh, in other words, if you're walking down the street, they're so short that you see over the top of them. And to do a proper urban design, you need building height. Ideally, it would be more than 24 feet, but but the the Steering Committee felt 24 feet was appropriate. We talked about requiring it to be two stories. Uh, and one of the members of the Steering Committee is a real commercial real estate broker, suggested, well, if your purpose is just to get building height, just let them do 24 feet if they want to do, uh, just a parapet wall that that reaches that height. They're fine. They're not forced to try to create a second story. They can just meet the standards. And uh, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I believe that he, uh, believed that was very appropriate for for Riverside. He was definitely supportive of the Steering Committee unanimously recommended that 24-foot building height. If you stick with, if you allow one-story buildings, you know, think about what you want Riverside to look like. Do you want it to look like a DuPage County suburb? Or do you want it to look like a downtown, an urban area that is welcoming to pedestrians, that's pedestrian scale, uh, and that welcomes people walking and biking rather than just cars? Um, and and I think that's the best way I can describe it is one-story buildings of what you see out in the suburbs or on Ogden Avenue, it doesn't create a pleasant environment for people walking and biking. Um, that's the same reason why we don't allow parking between the building and the street, um, because that just ruins any kind of pedestrian connection that a development could have. And this is a pedestrian village, I think.
But is are we different between our between our downtown and between our Harlem Avenue corridor?
I don't think so. I mean, they're certainly different, and I'd like to see the Burlington. And this, we're just talking about, well, tonight, we're really just talking about downtown only. But we'll see in the next version, I assume, by the next time, we'll be talking about the Harlem and Burlington area. We're not doing any zoning changes that would affect Harlem and Long Common. None of the TOD only includes basically the two train station areas, Burlington Down, the real traditional downtown and Harlem and Burlington and Quincy. Uh, we're not affecting the zoning anywhere else. Um, and I personally would like to see that Harlem and Burlington area become more of a traditional downtown in its appearance with with buildings out to the street, with minimum building height, um, hopefully maybe even some taller buildings at some port, some point to support the train station and businesses that may want to be in that that location. But anyway, my point was to explain where the 24 feet came from. It was not arbitrary. Uh, it's basically what a two-story building would look like and what you need to have to, um, uh, to achieve a streetscape, a pleasant inviting streetscape. Uh, and if McDonald's, if someone wants to to locate there, they 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 wouldn't be chased away. They just have to build a 24-foot building, and they do that quite often. I mean, it's it's not unheard of for chains to adapt their buildings to the local codes.
Well, that, you know, I I is there a way we can do a survey of some of our local bus, our local communities, La Grange, Hinsdale, whatever, communities that are like ours, and see what kind of zoning variances have gone be, you know, before them, where where the new businesses, where the developments are coming from, and see, I mean, again, 2019 to 2022, a lot has changed. Um, train train ridership has changed. Everything has changed. Things may come back, but um, I'd like to I'd like to make sure that we're not we're not in 2023 enacting things that 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 are little, you know, are are not what we should be doing and and not following the trends of today. Go ahead, Ebony.
I was just going to say, um, with respect to making things pedestrian-friendly, um, that is a definitely laudable goal. Um, but I also, you know, I found it helpful to go through these maps that were provided, um, following the Preservation Commission meeting minutes, uh, that described exactly how many stories each building in each of the different zones was. And then to realize that, like in this area that we're talking about tonight in the B two, the current zoning says three stories, 35 feet. And in order to get to what the Village Center was several years ago, they did have to go through a variance process, and they got five variances, and a lot of people were very, very upset. You know, the neighbors just felt it was out of scale, um, not consistent with the residential areas leading up to it. Um, and I agree, like I said, with the philosophy that we want to be pedestrian-friendly, but is making a 48-foot, four-story Village Center height the given with the potential for a 60-story, I'm sorry, 60-foot, five-story planned unit development in this same zone? You know, what does that do to the walkability and the look and the feel? And how do the neighbors feel about that that live in the residential areas and the apartments around there? I I think we need to really think about that. I'm I'm sunburned because I walked today. I walked, you know, the B two. I walked Harlem. And, you know, I was just trying to envision, is are there proper transitions between existing residential areas and then what's being proposed in these different areas? So I just think we need to think about that piece a little more, rather than applying a, oh, here's the, you know, TOD plan that we're using in all these different communities to Riverside proper. Because, you know, while Harlem Avenue may be one animal, um, in terms of the traffic and the commerce and the vibe, you know, the walkability of our central business district in the current B two is very different. So we need to think about the space.
Doug?
Trustee Marshazka brought up the maximum building height. Um, and I wanted to also follow up on the minimum in both, actually. I mean, I actually feel stronger, and I think the Steering Committee might agree with me. Uh, I actually feel stronger about the minimum building height. If we wanted, if people were concerned about increasing heights and we wanted to keep the by right maximum three stories, uh, that would not concern me too much, as long as there's a provision through the PUD to go to four or five stories, and then they have to prove that it's not a negative impact on anyone, all that. But the 24 feet, I think, is critical. Think of it this way, uh, because this is, we're just talking about the B two, so we're talking mainly about Burlington Street here. Imagine the south side of the street, for whatever reasons, all those buildings were gone. Would you want three one-story buildings like are on the north side of the street built on the south side? How would that change the look of Burlington Street? I think it would be, I don't think it would be good. And I I think that's why we have 24 is when you see the north side of Burlington, those buildings that were built, I don't know, in the 70s or whenever they were built, uh, especially the ones in the middle, on the periphery, it's a little different, like Riverside Foods, and it's on the edge and so. But in the center of it, we've got those three built one-story buildings on the north side. I just imagine how much more attractive and friendly and and inviting Burlington Street would be if you had two-story or more buildings on that north side.
Go ahead.
You know, I I on for for the central business district, Doug, in theory, I agree with you. But how attractive is that vacant lot where that building, the the paint, I mean, that got knocked down? I mean, unfortunately, we need to bring in development, and we need to bring in, encourage businesses where peoples want to shop. You want to get pedestrians, you need to have places where they want to go. So if it's a two-story building versus a three-story building, that's a much different discussion between a one-story building and a dilapidated two-story building that's in need of repair or a vacant lot. I mean, I think that's the perspective we have to have. Second point I want to make is just to clarify, you know, what President Ballerine said, you know, we need to distinguish between what's going on in the central business district and what's going on in our Harlem Avenue TOD, because I think there's that's still, I think, open to debate at the board as to what that Harlem Avenue TOD should be. Should that be bring in businesses for sales tax drivers? Or should that be, you know, density residential and make Harlem Avenue walkable? Which I don't know what you would need to do to make Harlem Avenue walkable, but I I can't get there. Uh, so I just want to make sure those two issues are on the table.
But tonight, we're just talking about B two.
Right. Okay. Stevens?
So I would also like to know the 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 logic between, um, the logic behind a five-story. Like, we have our water tower, which is, you know, supposed to be, it's considered the center, the gem in the center of town. And so, um, I just have this vision in my head of the buildings, like, sort of making it seem small. It just seems like that would be counterproductive and just maybe just would rob the center, central business district of charm. I just feel like we need to consider the assets of the center, central business district before we agree to, um, you know, put huge structures up that could shadow, overshadow our resources.
I think one one thing that was helpful is you told me that the Village Center is 56 feet tall.
I think it's 56 feet.
Okay, so the maximum would be 60, so four foot taller than the Village Center that's there. So that gives you a little bit of perspective, because someone says, wow, what's 60 feet?
Right.
Yeah, it's hard to say that. But that gives you a little bit of perspective, but I do agree with what you're saying. Um, you know, I I think we have an, I think we discussed a lot of different things. Um, I believe Mr. Hannan, uh, recommendation would be helpful for all of us, because it seems like this is this is a tough thing to slog through. Um, so if 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 you can start doing some of that.
Sure.
Um, and then if you if if staff could also start doing some research with with what's going on around us. How is how is, you know, how are other villages handling it? How are what what development is happening in other village? You know, what has the last three years done to our ton to downtowns? And let's see. And I'd also like to know, I I I right now, if I was a building owner and somebody said that you can't rent your first floor to somebody without coming to me for permission, I wouldn't make me a happy person. Um, so I I don't know if I like the special use, but I I'd probably have to to do some more thinking and do some more talking with 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 smarter people than I am, um, on zoning than than to get my head around that. But I just, I mean, if I own the building, um, you know, I should be able, I mean, and I mean, I think Mr. Chairperson Pipel's, you know, uh, statement was right. I mean, let's just say it's a call center of 50 people answering Comcast, you know, issues. Those 50 people have to eat. You know, those 50 people have to, you know, come in in the morning and get coffee and eat and have lunch and chop and whatever, come to our town. So I I don't, you know, I I think, you know, that kind of thing is not a bad thing either. So I I just, I want to know what kind of businesses you're talking about before we before we make them jump through hoops to in order to do that kind of stuff. Um, so does everybody feel comfortable with the discussion we've had tonight? And we'll move on to Harlem at the next meeting. And meantime, staff will continue to do some research for us and try to make us all feel more comfortable with all these red lines.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. We appreciate what you and and Anne have done. It's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we move on to new business. Um, a resolution amending the Village of Riverside Employee Manual and recognizing established Veterans Day as a paid holiday in the Village of Riverside, Cook County, State of Illinois. Analysts split.
Good evening. Uh, the Village of Riverside Employee Manual was last revised in February to adopt Juneteenth as a paid holiday. Currently, the village affords the police officers Veterans Day as a paid holiday as part of their collective bargaining agreement. In the interest of equity between union and non-union staff, the board is asked to consider establishing Veterans Day as a paid holiday. Please let me know if you have any additional questions.
I just can't believe it's not already, so I'm in favor of it being a paid holiday.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallagos, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Marshazka. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, next thing is a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into agreement with Core Construction and issue a purchase order not to exceed the amount of $58,245.83 for village office renovations. And just as a side note, this is not for my personal office, okay? I still have to sit in front of Jessica in the chair. Um, go ahead.
I I will try to be as quick as Ian. Um, so earlier in this year, we began a multi-phased office renovation, which began with the security improvements to the front lobby here, um, the clerk windows, the door between this room and the offices, and then the entry door up front. We're now moving into the second phase of the renovations, which will be for the renovation outside the village manager's office, which will become the assistant village manager's office. Uh, so there'll be enclosures, uh, to the current open office, so it'll be become a private office. There will be some modifications and renovations to the lighting, the electrical, everything that would be involved in such a a renovation. The trim, the door, the hardware will all match existing, um, term hardware that's throughout the village, so there'll be consistency throughout. Later this fall, there will be what we were calling the third phase, which would be brought to the board for partition walls, cubicles, furniture, to fill out the rest of the offices to accommodate the new staff that's been brought on over the past year.
Thank you.
If anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Director Tapp? Hearing none. If I can have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Trustee Evans, second.
I'll make the second.
Second by Trustee Gallagos. Ethan, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, last thing on our new business is Village of Riverside Financial Forecast. Director Johns.
Good evening. Presented before you tonight is the village's five-year financial forecast spanning fiscal years 2023 to 2027. The purpose of this forecast is to provide the board with information concerning the projected revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the village's general fund. This forecast should assist in identifying areas and opportunities where revenues and expenditures may be adjusted before the final budget is presented. Much of this information and data used in preparation of this forecast has been obtained from internal financial records, trend analysis, discussions with the various department heads concerning short-term and long-term expectations, and external sources such as the Illinois Municipal League and the Illinois Department of Revenue. Several items that I wanted to highlight tonight are the village's revenue sources. The first item I wanted to discuss was the property tax levy. Overall, property taxes are expected to increase 5% in 2023 from the final 2021 extended levy, 5% in 2024, 2.5% in 2025, and 1.5 in subsequent years. While the police pension levy is estimated to decrease 2.37% in 2023 and estimated to increase 3% in subsequent years. Wanted to talk a little bit about how the property tax levy is calculated. CPIU is used for the calculation of the 22 levy was 7%, which exceeds the maximum levy increase for non-home rule entities. This is the first time since the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTEL, um, was required to cap the levy in Cook County since its conception in 1994. The 2022 property tax levy has also been complicated by some of the problems at Cook by some of the problems at Cook County's tax billing offices. We have not received a final property tax extension report yet and second, um, prop, second cycle of property tax bills have not gone out yet. So the plan is to estimate the property taxes as, um, to ask the county for excess of what we think we will get. So they cut us off so we don't lose any property taxes on the table. We are estimating our levy, um, based on the percentage increases in CPIU. Um, if you look at the graph on page 317 of your board packet, you will see that the police pension fund levy in green has increased dramatically since 2011. The increase, this increased from 154,000 in 2001 to 1.46 million in 2023 is slightly less than 10 times over a period of 20 years. In previous years, the village has elected to levy their recommended contribution. Wanted to talk quickly about some of our other major revenue streams, including the state per capita taxes, or LGDF. We have seen significant increases in the, these collections in 2022. LGDF is made up of income tax, use ca, tax, and more recently cannabis tax. In recent years, this revenue has been unpredictable due to the decreases due to state budget cuts. So staff has been very conservative in this, estimating this revenue stream in future years. And based off trend analysis, is projecting slightly less than what the Illinois Municipal League has put out. Municipal sales tax have also seen a significant increase due to the law change regarding the collection of online sales taxes. I also wanted to mention that the Recreation Department revenues have rebounded nicely since the pandemic shutdowns in 2020. The largest area of expense in the general fund are personnel-related costs. 2023 estimates include, um, 2.5 to 2.75 for union increases. Also wanted to mention that utilities, including fuel, natural gas, and electricity have seen unprecedented increases this year. Are there any questions about the report? Or would you like me to get into the items of discussion that I need specific feedback on?
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
For the general fund, the past several years now, the village has extended the property tax levy for the Parks and Recreation Department at the approximated minimum rate of .0667 per $100 of EAV. Would the board like to keep that proportion of the tax levy allocated towards Parks and Rec at .0667 per EAV? Or would the board like to increase their levy the same percentage as the overall property tax levy?
Can you tell us what the effect of that would be?
The increase would be significantly more. I'm estimating an extra 40,000 to 50,000 that would go towards the Parks and Rec Fund that would be removed from the general fund.
Okay.
Tax levy. I will mention that the Parks and Rec Fund is one of the only areas in the general fund that does have the opportunity to collect their own revenue as a more entrepreneurial department.
Okay, and I, and I just, so everybody understands this also as I, many years ago, when this was established, we also said that Parks and Rec has to maintain, has to pay for their own capital funds. They, they don't dip into the capital of, of the village. So they have to save to, to pay for their own trucks, pay for their own equipment, build their own parks and things like that.
Correct.
And as well as pay back the building. So just, it's just not another $50,000 to go to Parks and Rec. Um, they have capital needs too, so just, just with that background. Any feedback or questions? Trustee Hannan.
Is this, would be an overall increase in our share of the local property tax? Or, I'm trying to put this in perspective.
No, it would be the distribution.
Taking it from the general fund and putting it towards the Parks and Rec Fund?
Parks and Rec assignment of the general fund.
And then once it's, and this is a question, once it's in the Parks and Rec assignment, it can't come out?
Correct. However, the reverse is not true. So if it went into the unassigned fund balance, the board would have the flexibility to grant it to do capital improvement for parks or to grant it to the Parks and Recreation Department.
I'll have to head out flexibility.
Okay.
Plan B has worked for me.
Ms. Evans?
Um, I don't have anything to say, I'm listening.
Okay, all right.
I do, I.
I just, we're seeing nods, I just wanted to get nods on this side.
You had me until we were locked in. Um, I don't like being locked into stuff. Um, but I do want to encourage Parks and Rec to come to us and give us an opportunity to allocate that money. I do think our Parks and Recs, um, are, are under heavy demand and, and show use and can use those funds for capital improvement. And so I, I would like to make an effort where possible to give them some of those resources, but continue to have it in the, on, in the general fund for that purpose.
Flexibility.
Would the board like to levy the Illinois statutory minimum contribution of 1.192,578,000 for the police pension board? Or the recommended contribution of 1.468,495 dollars? The recommended, um, is preferable to increase the funding level of the pension fa, plan. Currently, the pension plan is funded at only 45, 44.25%.
We did the recommended last year, is that correct?
Correct. The only time we did not do the recommended in recent years was, um, due to a conservative budget during the pandemic. And at the end of the year, the board adopted an additional contribution to move up to the recommended.
Recommended.
The village board may have, or the village may have a cannabis, cannabis dispensary open in 2023, with the village receiving an additional 3% sales tax. Would the board like staff to present a policy where a portion of that funding would go to pay down police pension obligations?
Would we be locked into that too?
It would be a policy that the board would have the ability to amend as requested.
If we don't specifically allocate it, what happens to those funds?
Unassigned general fund.
I like that flexibility.
Same.
Same.
Yeah, I think that's part of a larger discussion of what to do with those in light of the various infrastructure needs.
The board can always make a decision at the end of a given fiscal year to make an additional contribution as we have in the past too.
Currently, the Village of Riverside maintains a 50,000 deductible for all claims with the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, or IRMA. Um, the risk management pool offers deductibles ranging from 10,000 to 250,000. The past several years, we have had multiple $50,000 claims. Um, but I wanted to bring this option before the board.
Can you give us the difference between a 50 and a 25, or a 50 and 100? I mean, it's, it's, what's the, what's the different costs?
It really depends on our claim history for that year and also the, the lower the deductible, the higher the rates.
Okay.
If, if you want me to, I'll put on my, my IRMA hat, thank you. Um, and so what IRMA does, when they're figuring out our, our contribution for a given year, they look at our claims to contribution ratio over the last five years and then also look at our different losses. And so then they also assign whether or not you have to pay a premium on top of your base based on where your claims were at. And so what we can do is request from IRMA, um, what potentially we would have seen over the past couple of years should we have moved to a 10,000, 25, 50, 100, or 250,000. Um, the last time we pulled the analysis, um, we were well situated to stay at a $50,000 deductible. And so we can certainly look at that. As you go higher in your deductible, they give you a credit on your, um, contribution to the pool. And so I believe, I'm going off memory, but I believe it was approximately 40% moving to the $50,000 deductible. And so that's how we've been able to essentially build our excess surplus that is sitting at IRMA because in previous years, so prior to 2013, we would utilize that to help balance our budget. So we get that money back from IRMA, it would help to balance the budget. And so instead, we've moved to the optional deductible, which has helped. Um, we've had some pretty significant claims. This year, we had a significant claim. And so that claim is going to stay with us for the next five years. And so my, my initial thought is we're probably well situated at the 50,000, but we can certainly get that information and present it to the board at the next meeting as to whether or not it, it makes sense.
Yeah, but would be up.
I'd like to see that analysis.
Yeah, I, I mean, in the past, I mean, I believe when I first came on, we had $10,000, was there?
No, no, no. I was, that was my first year as finance director. I bought to the village the option of moving from a $2,500 deductible to 10 or 25. And at that point, the board just jumped right into the $50,000 deductible, and here we are. But it was a great decision because we've been able to build those funds over the past 10 years almost.
And those funds are well over.
1.3 million.
Well, over a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I think, I think we're, we're situated, but I think we'd, we'd probably, to their due diligence, we'd like to see that, that report.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, Ms. Johns?
For the Water and Sewer Fund, typically staff brings recommendations for water rate increases due to changes in expenses like water commodity increase or a staffing change. Would the board like staff to bring a rate adjustment back effective January 1, 2023 for budgeted staffing changes?
I, I'll, well, I'll, I'll start. Um, I, I, because we switched from that, from that $30 infrastructure fee to the percentage, I would like to see how that affects. That's only been into effect for what, six months, maybe?
Mm-hmm. That was effective June 1st.
Yes, Ms. Evans?
Um, I, I agree, I'd like to wait a little bit. Like, I feel like every time I turn around, we have to raise the water rates. Um, and, you know, we did decide to go to the $30 bimonthly fee.
We removed the $30 bimonthly fee effective June 1st in favor of increasing both the water and sewer rate by $1.50.
Yeah, I would like to just wait and see what happens before we can start raising the water rate.
I agree.
I agree. Okay. My husband will lose it. We raise the rates again.
For the Parking Lot Fund, in 2022, the Parking Lot Fund is estimated to reimburse the general fund for $106,789 for personnel costs and day-to-day maintenance of the 11 parking lots. With the potential cost of an electric charging station in the Parking Lot Fund, this fund is going to have very minimal fund balance reserves yet left. However, typically, we do increase this, um, contribution by CPI each year. Would the board like this annual reimbursement to be adjusted by CPI, which is 7%, or by the property tax increase of 5%?
Are we talking about both Parking Lot and commuter, raising both fees? Or are we stuck with?
We're talking about the amount that the Parking Lot Fund pays the general fund for maintenance of all the parking lots.
Okay, but what about raising the fees in the Parking Lot? Did, was that part of that?
That's my next question. Would you like me to skip to that question first?
Let's say, yeah, let's get to that, let's get to the raising the fees before we start moving the money.
Okay. Currently, the Parking Lot fees have not been adjusted, um, I believe since 2017. And the Parking Lot Agreement with BNSF lists that, um, 150 spaces must be reserved for commuters. Currently, due to Metro ridership being down, we have a lot of unsold spots in Lot 1, um, since I have to reserve them for commuters. Would the board like to direct staff to work with BNSF to decrease the required amount of spaces required for, reserved for commuters?
I, I think ridership is fluctuating. I rode the train with Trustee Hannan the other day, and we both commented how many people were there, it was a surprise. And so my vote would be to give this a little time. I, I just, I don't know what ridership will look like and if those spaces are necessary. And I hate to give those up if, within a year or two, we, everyone's commuting on train again.
We're not giving them up though, right?
It would be first come, first served, who's ever on the waitlist, whether it be a commuter getting that spot next or someone requesting a 24-hour spot. So right now in Lot 1, I do have a waitlist for 24-hour spots that I cannot sell and no, and vacant spaces that are being held for commuters.
But a 24-hour spot is like, say, someone doesn't have enough parking at their residence or if it's renters, is that what that is? It's a, right, and so I, I do know there's a demand for that. I don't say this casually, I do know that there is a demand for that. Um, but once, once that goes to those spots, if the commuters need them again, it, it's, I think it's difficult to pull it back.
I will tell you, because I took out, I, I took some pictures, that I have noticed a huge increase of our bike racks, which makes me very excited because they're grant-funded, so they were a great investment. And so we do have people that, you know, ride their bikes to the train station that may in the past have not done that. Um, it was a nice day, I think it was two weeks ago. I went out and took a picture and all the bike racks were being used. And I think that's, that was kind of the compelling argument that Karen gave to Metra of, you know, how people are making their way to the train station is changing too. So that's just something to, to consider.
Winter is coming.
If I understand it correctly, what we're talking about is just negotiating with Metra regarding their required minimum. I would say most definitely do that because we could still provide 150 parking spaces to commuters if we want. We're just, we're, we have flexibility.
Well, let me, well, let me ask, let me ask.
I, I, yeah.
Let me ask you a question, how did you get to the train?
I walked.
How many?
It's not February yet.
But how many, how many commuters from Riverside, you know, use commuter, use the commuter parking lot?
That's fair, do we have stats? I'm just curious, but are a lot of our commuters in traditional commuting times, say 2019? Do we have data on whether those are primarily residents or people from outside of Riverside that are?
I don't know, um, but I can look into it. We do have that data. We do have the addresses of everyone that was renting at that time, so I can pull that.
I'm curious, it's not worth a multi-hour deep dive.
No, I, yeah, I agree, it's not worth that, but I, I think it's a good thing to have because, you know, the, the 24-hour spots are residents. You know, that, those, those are our first, you know, those are our first responsibilities, are residents. So I, I, I agree with Doug that I think it's, we should at least approach Burlington and start docking, see what we can do, and then we can make a decision later.
And we cannot charge a resident versus non-resident right for the commuters just so that the board is aware because of our BNSF agreement, because the parking lots, the majority of them are on their property.
Now the rate.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Trustee Clarity. One, I mean, to tell, to say people walk to the train, bike to the train, you know, let's ask the people that same question in February. Um, I, you know, the train ridership is coming back. I've had the pleasure of riding with Trustee Clarity. The other day, I drove with Trustee Pollak. It's a little, you know, potential Open Meetings Act situation every time I hop on the train. Just two. Um, but, you know, I, I, I don't want to confuse the two issues of going to BNSF. Again, flexibility is what we want. Um, I think it's a separate discussion on do we open those spots up? I don't want to lose our status as a train-friendly community.
Okay.
I mean, we just talked about making it more walkable, making it more usable. And, you know, part of that is, you know, taking the train, walking to the train. And, you know, part of that is, you know, taking the train, walking to the train, using that spot to potentially, you know, be closer to downtown and walk around. I don't, I don't want to make that residential full-time parking.
I think we need a little bit more information on that, what the usage is.
Would the Board also like to direct staff to work with BNSF to amend the Parking Lot maximum rate? Currently, BNS, we have to negotiate the maximum rate charged for the commuter parking spaces and the hourly rate at the commuter parking lot as well. The Board can elect to increase the residential 24-hour parking rate at their leisure.
When was the last time that we raised the rate?
2017.
We're just talking about asking for flexibility in that ceiling? Or would we have to implement it?
We would not have to implement it. We would do a new or an amendment to the agreement with BNSF that marks the maximum rate that we can charge, both for quarterly permits and hourly rates, and potentially the number of parking spots reserved for BNSF commuters.
But you have two questions there.
Right.
One is...
One is the rate.
Rate for commuters, and the other one is the rate for 24 hours. We haven't raised a 24-hour rate since, for five years.
We have not raised either rate in five years.
So I think we should at least look at, see what other, you know, what our neighbors are doing with rates and be in that, be in that same ballpark. Because as you say, we have lots that need to be referred, surfaced. We've been fortunate enough to get grants for some of that, but we're talking about charging stations. We're talking about a lot, I mean, a lot of our lots need some work, so I would think we'd want that flexibility and look at if we can raise those rates. Ms. Evans, Mike?
I just think that we need to know what the ridership is and what the demand is because if we can't get rid of the commuter spots that we have at the rate that we're charging, it doesn't make sense to make a special ask, you know, to raise that rate. If you decrease the number of commuter spots and, you know, at the same time, then demand for the ones that we have left increases, then that's when you need it. So it's...
Okay. Do you agree? Do we all agree that we should look at raising the rates for the 24-hour spots? Maybe I should break this up into two discussions.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. And then I think you need to work with BNSF and come back with those answers because their responses to us are going to make, are going to drive our decisions. Okay. Is that all your questions? No?
No, we're, we're going back to the, the one about the Parking Lot contribution to the General Fund, whether the Board would like to increase that by the property tax levy of 5% or by CPI of 7%.
CPI was very high, outright, like, you know, statistically and then perhaps an anomaly. I don't know. So it seems to me 5% made sense, but I do not feel strongly.
I, I would think we, I probably agree that we'd probably say CPI, CPI? Seven? Five, I'm sorry, 5%?
5%.
5%?
Okay.
That was the last of my questions.
Okay, well, I have a question for you.
Okay.
I was looking at the, the different charge. It looks like our vehicle stickers are going down price-wise. That we had spikes and then it, and I assume it's because there's a percentage of our residents that don't bother to buy vehicle stickers. How do we, how could we drive enforcement?
We did a, in 2019, the Village did a analysis with the Secretary of State for registered vehicles in Riverside. So that year, we got more compliance than we typically see because we were able to reach out, we were able to notify that this vehicle is registered to, to your house and collect that. We really do sell vehicle stickers based off renewals. We send notices to new tenants that vehicle stickers are required. And then if someone is getting a police ticket and they are noticed as a resident of Riverside, then they are also compelled to receive a vehicle sticker. So the Village could elect to do another Secretary of State analysis next year to increase that. We've also started working with the Police Department to see if we can coordinate efforts for outstanding police tickets with our parking data, our parking permit data, and our vehicle sticker data. So those are other ways that we've recently started to try to make sure everyone that has a vehicle that is registered or housed in Riverside has a vehicle sticker. Another idea as part of the rental registry program is we've started creating handouts that we can give to tenants as we're inspecting their units. So we can also hand out vehicle sticker applications at that point, but it is an application.
And I assume anyone that, then anyone that purchased a 24-hour parking permit...
Has a vehicle sticker.
Has a vehicle sticker. I would, I, from my point of view, I think, you know, our, our vehicle stickers aren't cheap, and I recognize that, but I don't, I also think it's also unfair for some people not to pay it. So whatever tools you have for compliance, I think we should do what we can. Yes, Mr. Hannan?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think the source of revenue is coming from the renters. I, I think there's a lot of residents who have elected to ignore. So I like that Secretary of State effect where, you know, it's not just, you know, telling the renters that they need to pay even more money. I like the idea of enforcing people who own in the Village to pay what they're supposed to be paying.
I think we should drive compliance by any means we can.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions for Director Johns? We move on to the trustee reports and communications. Do we have any reports and communications tonight?
Well, Alex go first.
Okay, well, thank you.
Trustee Gallegos?
As you know, fall is, well, on its way. And as you also will agree, that Riverside is absolutely beautiful when we are at peak foliage time. We will have a kayak paddle through our outfitter available to all residents and guests. That link will be available on the Parks and Recreation probably in the next couple days or so. And there is a cross-promotion they are doing with the Sand Trap. So I would encourage you to get out there, enjoy while we have the weather, while it's beautiful out there. That one week of foliage does not last forever, so it's certainly a sight to be seen. That's all I have for the night.
Thank you. Trustee Marshazga?
I have two items tonight. Okay, first of all, on Thursday, October 13th, at 7:00 PM at the Riverside Public Library, the Olmsted Society is presenting a free presentation by Patrick Cannon and photographer James Caulfield, who are going to be looking at some of the Chicago area's most distinctive and architecturally significant residents, including Riverside's own Coonlea Estate, as featured in their new book, At Home in Chicago: A Living History of Domestic Architecture. So it's essentially a walk through the city's 200-year history through different home styles. So you can't miss that. It's a wonderful evening that is planned. Another item that is of interest to residents is that there has been a celebrity of unusual stature who has been cited around Riverside at Hop Stop, at the Farmer's Market, Torta Proviso, and visiting our local attractions. Yes, it's none other than Frederick Law Olmsted. He is on a nationwide tour of his greatest landscape designs in celebration of his 200th birthday. Fred's travels have been generously sponsored by the National Association of Olmsted Parks. Fred will be visiting Riverside schools in the coming weeks to present copies of the new children's book, Parks for the People: How Frederick Law Olmsted Designed America for Their Libraries. And the Riverside Public Library is also on Fred's list to visit. So if you haven't seen him around town, just keep an eye out. Who knows where he'll be next?
You know, I did see Fred on TV stalking Peter from Riverside Foods. I saw him getting jiggy with it at the Hop Stop and then riding his bicycle in promo for, I wouldn't be surprised if we saw him kayaking on the river at some point.
I would be surprised.
That would be something.
I did mention he was of unusual stature, right?
She didn't men, she didn't mention that she had to sign out that outfit under her credit cards. I, I, you know, as you talk about Fred, I, you know, Aberdeen, I, you, this was your, I think you called it, I got this crazy idea on the phone. So I think it's been a great idea. Thank you very much for the work in getting it here. It's been, it's been fun having him around. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Fred himself, Trustee Gallegos, who wore that outfit for a while. I believe Ian, Ethan, Ethan wore it. And, and you guys all looked good in it. And then Eric, Eric from Visite Oak Park, and all of a sudden we had to roll up his pant legs because he's quite small.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our very own Ron Milk, UNEO Parks and Recreation, will be representing or serving as Fred during the school visits. He's the only one I could get who would get up at that hour. I'm just kidding.
Well, we appreciate...
It was wonderful. I really thank everybody who's been involved with the effort.
We appreciate you bringing him in, and we appreciate you all for...
My kids appreciate Big Head Fred everywhere. He's cool, you know? I've seen a lot of fun pictures on Facebook.
All right, with Fred, the Board does not have a need for executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
Second.
Try Trustee Marshazga. Ethan?
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos. Aye. Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Marshazga?
Aye.
Trustee Hannan?
Aye.
Trustee Pollock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nine o'clock.